Testing, testing.
Yeah, I did. Yeah, I heard that. She can, uh, on this red tag here, what time is it gonna be?
Update, is that Tuesday?
Yeah.
What's that? Oh, I know. That was hilarious.
I like that, that's cool.
Yeah, it is. Oh, thanks, yeah. Is there any chance in the... Guys, finish up right after the meeting.
Yeah. I'm wanting to get here.
That's funny. I did do that, I think.
I think, I don't think you do.
Sorry, guys, I just got out there.
You might have a little cocktail.
Time flies, you know, and having a good time.
That's the way to be. Hey, did you hear my comments this morning?
Yes, I heard you.
About South County.
Yeah, I'm done on high-speed rail, I'm gonna fall in.
Well, that's gotta do with it, that's not my work here. Yeah. But nobody... It's past different time, right?
I gotta say, I don't see Woody's back here.
Well, we've got a couple minutes, we're good there.
Is he? Okay. Who's been in my key?
Oh, yeah. He's here, yeah, I will, he's here.
Morning, and welcome to our regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Supervisors. If you will please stand and join me in the flag salute led by Supervisor Cox and remain standing for a moment of silence.
Ready, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. First item will be the first supervisor of matters, and I'll turn to Supervisor Vanderpoel.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a few events that are taking place this week, it seems like it is event season for sure. This Friday at noon at the Tulare Golf Course, Ag Ventures, the Division of the International AgriCenter, will be having their annual fundraising golf tournament, and that entity promotes ag education amongst our youth. They do a great job, and so I encourage anyone that golfs, or even if you don't golf, pay for a team and go out there and just support them. COS Tulare Foundation will be having, along with the Chamber of Commerce, their Crush, Wine Crush Event at the COS Tulare Campus, from 5:30 to 8, and that is a fundraiser for COS Tulare Foundation, as well as the Chamber of Commerce in Tulare. Saturday at 8:30 at the Delago Park in Tulare will be the NAMI Walk, the National Alliance for the Mentally Ill. They do a great job with that every year, and the turnout is fantastic, and this year we're actually gonna have decent weather too, so that'll be nice. Then, after that, I will be going down to Early Mart where they have their annual Health and Safety Fair. They do a great job with that, and I appreciate all the county departments and entities that participate and bring resources to the residents of Early Mart as well. And then, lastly, the Tulare Athletic Boxing Club will be having their annual fundraiser at the home of Jimmy and Tammy Valov in Tulare. That is Saturday night, beginning at 6:00 PM. So, look forward to great support at that event as well, for that group. Appreciate all they do.
So, will you be doing some crushing of grapes, stomping on grapes?
No, no crushing of grapes, maybe some consuming of the aftermath of the crush, but that's about it.
Make sure it's had a little bit of time. Supervisor Cox.
Hey, one of the things, or a couple of things we get to do as board members, occasionally we sit on a property owner's associations, and we had, last week, on Thursday, we had the annual Courtyard Property Owner Association Meeting, and that's the property where Tisara is at, so we had, actually had members show up and make comments about the conditions at property, and so that was a fun meeting to go to. Last week, also met with Chief Myers, Judge Barconi, Allison Pierce, and Lou Griswold of the Fresno Bee, talking about the report that came out that had some unfavorable things to say about Tulare County, and we're able to, I think, shed some light on some wonderful things that we're doing for the young people in our county. This Friday, or last Friday, we had our First Five Retreat, where we looked at our three- and five-year plan for First Five and its funding. Yesterday, I did participate in the press conference that some of them at Mathis put on in the morning. It was very well attended, it was nice, I got to see our new OES vehicles. Didn't realize we had such nice-looking vehicles with lights everywhere on them, so it was pretty cool. And right after that, we, all board members were at our TCAG meeting. That was the monthly meeting held from 11:45 actually until about 2:30 yesterday. Tomorrow, I have our Retirement Board meeting. On Thursday, the Step Up Challenge Event is kicking off with all of the advisors being trained across the street here at the Tulare County Office of Education Building. Last thing I have, last night, we had a community forum held at Two Ten Cafe. It was well-attended, we had about forty people there from the public. We had our sheriff, our chief probation officer, two sergeants from the Visalia Police Department, and Allison Pierce, talk about what's happening in the community with gangs, violence, youth, youth offenders, and then what we're actually doing to help curb those trends. That's it, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Ashida.
Last Friday, I went to Madera, Merced, for a Joint Powers Authority meeting, and that was on Amtrak. The main business that we had to attend to was our budget, and we're still waiting for the amount of funds that we'll receive from the federal government for our Valley Amtrak line. So, until we receive that, we can't approve our budget. Sunday, I attended the Historical Society fundraiser, and they had the Sons of the Pioneers, and this, they had about four hundred people. This is the first year they've had gathering that large, mainly because of the entertainment. Usually, there's about two hundred people at the most, and this year, they had approximately four hundred people. This coming Saturday, I'll be up at Sequoia Park. We're celebrating one hundred and twenty-five years of the park's creation, and that celebration will be taking place at the upper parking lot of the General Sherman Tree, and it starts at ten o'clock, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Supervisor Ennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, yesterday at the TCAG meeting, we did revisit the transportation M-back fees, and of course, everybody was kind of in unison on it to just step back for a while and maybe table it for a year or so, or two years, or however till we can have a retreat or something and get more input from all the communities. The aid incorporated cities, as well as the county and members at large. This afternoon, I'll be leaving for a RCRC convention, and we'll be gone till Friday, so that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. There, as Supervisor Vanderpoel alluded to, it seems like there's a lot of things happening this time of the year, and he missed the most important thing, of course, which is this Saturday, the National Raisin Festival will be occurring at Dinuba, or about the hundred and tenth year, or something of that nature. But, anyway, a great event, parade at ten o'clock, and lots of good food in the park, and it's a good time. A lot of people come back home, a lot of class reunions are held around raisin day, so it's a lot of fun. I did ask, I brought, I brought one item that I wanted to share with my board members and with the community, and what Michelle has just put up on the screen, I'll set the stage for this. What you're looking at is where we exist today in terms of coming into compliance with ozone. By the way, I bring this to you as a member of the Board of Supervisors, representative on the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District Governing Board. What you're looking at is a representative of what the ozone sources of that pollution are, and this is after we have reduced about eighty percent of the ozone pollution in the San Joaquin Valley since 1992. So, our air quality is very, very much improved, notwithstanding forest fires, which can make your air quality very, very bad, but we don't control that. But what I wanted to show the board and show the public is what we're facing going into the future. When you look at this chart, you see stationary and area sources, other mobile sources, off-road, farm equipment, pasture vehicles, heavy-duty trucks, those are the sources of ozone pollution in the San Joaquin Valley. And then you see these red lines. The red lines represent what it takes to meet attainment of the federal standards. The top red line, the skinny one, is 1997 standards. The one, the next to the bottom one is the 2008 standard, and now there's a proposed standard. We haven't seen it yet, but we're looking at, anticipating it will be that bottom line. Now, ozone is a naturally occurring substance in the San Joaquin Valley, and so the natural ozone standards, the natural ozone condition of the valley will be very close to what we anticipate the feds will set as a new standard. If nobody lived here, if there wasn't one combustible engine operating in the San Joaquin Valley, I'm talking from Bakersfield, from Kern County to Stockton, there would be ozone that would probably be very close to the federal standard. Another thing of interest that I want you to know is that this top thing where it says stationary and area sources, that is the only thing that the air district, the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District, has control over. We do not control any of these other mobile sources, those come under the federal and state EPA. So, we have a situation where the air board, this local San Joaquin air board, is required to come up with a plan that will come into compliance with the federal standards by a certain timeframe, when we don't even control. You could take ours off the chart, and you can see, we still don't even come close to meeting the standards set by the federal government. So, what we have done as an air board is tried to breathe some new sanity into the Clean Air Act, and we're proposing some changes to the Clean Air Act that would help us to come into compliance and give us time and not penalize us, because that's, the bottom line is the penalties that apply. If we don't come up with a plan, again, that's approved by the federal EPA, they will withhold our federal transportation, you know, taxes that come into the San Joaquin Valley. It's over two billion dollars a year. They will take away the power of the local air board and take it to Washington DC to the federal EPA. So, I just want people to understand the kind of circumstances we're operating under, and recognize that we've made great progress, but we've got eighty percent of the pollutants out of the air. To meet the federal standard, we have to get ninety percent of that remaining twenty percent. And that is extremely, there's no, at this point in time, there is no way that can happen. There is, there is no technology that exists to do that. But who's to say that maybe twenty, forty, thirty, sixty years from now, that will happen? But at the same time, we've gotta come up with a plan today, or in the next few years, to show attainment. And so, I think, I think people need to understand that, you know, what we're operating under. So, I wanted to bring it to the board's attention and to the public.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I read an article where fifty percent of the counties in the United States cannot meet this standard.
The new standard, yeah.
New standard.
So, it's, it's, it's sort of an insanity situation. All right. Now, we have a much more pleasant thing, which is a proclamation recognizing the one hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary of Sequoia National Park. I understand that we have Park Superintendent, Woody Smith here. Woody, recognize you don't have your hat on. This is a proclamation honoring the one hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary of Sequoia National Park. Tulare County, Visalia in particular, had a very strong influence. Thank you. Was very strongly involved and engaged in the process which created the national park. Whereas Sequoia National Park was established September twenty-fifth, eighteen ninety, and whereas the park was created through the advocacy of local San Joaquin Valley residents who desired to see giant sequoia trees protected for the enjoyment and inspiration of future generations, whereas it is the second oldest national park in the nation, behind Yellowstone, and whereas the park was expanded nineteen twenty-six to include Mount Whitney and the High Sierra Backcountry, it protects thirty-nine giant sequoia groves, which accounts for forty percent of all native sequoia groves in the world. And whereas the General Sherman Tree located in Giant Forest is the largest living tree on earth, I saw something that says it's the tallest, it's not, it's the largest, and is approximately two thousand years old. And whereas the park supports a strong tourism economy with over one point seven million annual visitors who participate in a variety of outdoor recreation activities, including hiking, camping, riding horseback, fishing, kayaking, and climbing. And whereas the National Park Service will celebrate its centennial anniversary in two thousand and sixteen, and is encouraging all Americans to find your parks and experience the beauty and natural curiosities of Sequoia National Park. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Tulare County Board of Supervisors do hereby honor Sequoia National Park on its one hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary. Signed Alan Ashida, Pete Vanderpoel, Phil Cox, Steve Worthley, and Mike Ennis. Woody, congratulations, thank you for being here. Love to hear from you. You might even want to say a few words about how the fire has affected the park.
Sure, thank you. Well, let me, let me begin. Mr. Chairman and Supervisor members, thank you for this honor. We greatly appreciate it, up at the park, and appreciate the recognition. I wanted to share just a little bit of history. It was in nineteen, eighteen seventy-eight, a young editor at the Visalia Delta Weekly, George Stewart, began writing editorials on the destruction of giant sequoia trees in the mountains of Tulare County. And initially, his editorials focused on strengthening state laws that would protect the monarch trees from logging. When those state laws failed to produce results, he began to shift his advocacy and advocated for the establishment of a public park that would protect groves of giant sequoias for the benefit of the people. That campaign took on added urgency in July of eighteen ninety, when the last remaining giant sequoia grove, the Garfield Grove, was taken out of the public domain and placed on the market for private land claims. Fearing that those trees would be lost, George Stewart built a local campaign involving many prominent citizens here in Tulare County, including John Towey, Lindsey Tipton, and Frank Walker, and they collectively began a letter-writing campaign, got newspapers, magazines, periodicals across the country involved. And legislation was introduced in Congress, and it passed the House of Representatives August twenty-third of that, of that summer. It moved on to the Senate, where it passed on September eighth, and then President Benjamin Harrison signed the legislation into law on September twenty-fifth. So, thirty-two days from passage in the House to signature by the President. That's a pretty phenomenal record in today's political context, and it just underscores that national parks, and Sequoia National Park in particular, is a bipartisan idea that has strong support, and it's still, still a bipartisan idea today. So, this weekend, on Saturday, we are gonna be commemorating the anniversary. We've got a full day of events, starting with a ten o'clock ceremony to honor the creation of the nation's second-largest national park, so I invite all of you to please join us, and to the public as well, to those that are here, please come up and have a great day in the park. Thank you.
Did you want to say about the recent rough fire and how it might have affected the park?
Yes. The rough fire actually had a very small footprint on the national park lands, just over eight thousand acres, over a hundred and forty thousand acres on the Sierra and Sequoia National Forest. But it had a tremendous impact on us operationally. We literally shut down Kings Canyon National Park as a result of the loss of Highway one eighty, which was largely burnt over, and, and just to facilitate the firefighting efforts. So, the good news is that the Grant Grove area of Kings Canyon National Park is reopening this morning. The community of Willsonia has reopened, the cabin owners are able to come in, and visitors are once again back visiting the General Grant Tree, so that's, that's all good news. We'll do a big after-action review on the lessons that were learned from this fire. It was an unwanted fire from the very beginning with the conditions that we have today. Lightning caused, it escaped initial attack, and has grown substantially, but we've got it largely contained as of yesterday, and by this weekend, we're gonna move to a type-three team that is essentially gonna be in patrol and mop-up effort at that point. So, so things are looking up.
Thank you, Woody. Pleasure to have you here, and come back and see us more often.
Yep, thank you.
Any comments or board members?
Superintendent Smith also sits on the Sierra Nevada Conservancy Board, and we missed your last meeting because we knew about the rough fire. Thank you for your service, and congratulations to everyone involved in the past, our forefathers who had the wisdom to create this park, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Woody.
Thank you.
Up next, item number three is a presentation by two thousand and fifteen leadership class on Volitionism Project, and I believe Rhonda, our HR Director, is going to kick this banner off. Rhonda, good morning.
Good morning, Chairman Worthley, members of the board, CAO Rousseau, and Council Catherine Bales Lane. First of all, before I talk about the two thousand and fifteen leadership class and their project, I would just remind you that the most important activity in terms of county employees is going to take place tomorrow at our health fair that we will be holding, Health and Wellness Fair, at the Visalia Convention Center. Employees are given time off to attend pending workload in their department, and we will be having about fifty vendors there, offering health and exercise and wellness-related information, as well as workshops. We're going to be doing a desk yoga workshop demonstration. And this year, the assessor's office will be doing an Xbox Rock Band Challenge, which is not gonna feature the assessor nor the assistant assessor, I understand, but a lot of their other staff will be doing a demonstration in the morning. So, you're all invited to attend, and also this year, which will be new, is our two thousand and fifteen leadership class. We'll be having their booth, and I'm going to let them tell you about that. The two thousand and fifteen class is sitting behind me here, and I will be announcing their names in just a moment so that they can stand and be recognized. We have started in February, March timeframe, and we've held six months of workshops, monthly workshops, as well as we've begun work on their service project. So, today, they'll be telling you about what they've come up with and asking for your support, and will be returning in December or early January with the results of their projects and sharing that with the board. We have twenty members who are in our two thousand and fifteen class, and as I announced her name, if you would stand up... And Yessenia Lemus, Child Support Services. Tammy Peckham from probation. Greg Powers from probation. Chelsia McCarthy, probation. Carmina Camacho, Public Defender's Office. Stacy Chastain, HHSA. Dana Allen, Childs, HHSA. Uh, Jan Winslow, who I know is not here today, but she is also from HHSA. Stephen Leahy. Jessica Dunn, also from HHSA. Sung Kwan from RMA. Alfred Reynoso Harrow from RMA. Tara Freitas from Auditor Controller's Office. Rainbow Park Moore from County Council. Rayanne Dworky with our IT Department. Clifford Cliff Ingram from our Act Commissioner's Office. Captain Kevin Riggy from Fire. And Sheriff Sergeants Harold Lyles, Jerry Mayberry, and Joshua Wheeler are in our class this year.
Let's give them a hand.
I would like to bring up Stacy Chastain and Yessenia Lemus, who will discuss their, uh, class project.
Thank you. Thank you, Rhonda. Good morning, Chairman Worthley, and Board Members, Mr. Rousseau, Ms. Bales Lane. We do have a presentation for you this morning on our project. And on behalf of the Leadership Academy of two thousand and fifteen, myself and Yessenia will be going over these slides with you. So we're going to go ahead and get started. The name of our project this year is Tulare County Volunteers, also known as hashtag TC Volunteers. Our Leadership Academy this year is comprised of twenty representatives throughout the county, very diverse group. All future leaders who desire in making a difference in our workplace as well as the communities that we live. Uh, when we came together as a group, we started discussing the importance of this project, what it meant to us as employees, but also as community members. And it was really important that we focused on the community that we live, of course, and serve in Tulare County. Some of the things that we started, uh, researching was the county in itself, so we could get a better understanding, um, for the population. So some facts that we'd like to share with you is that there are four hundred and fifty-eight thousand, one hundred and ninety-eight residents living in the county, which cover approximately four thousand eight hundred and sixty-three square miles, that you have gap, geographical area. Approximately twenty-six percent of the families residing in the county live at or below poverty level. And fifty-two percent of those residents are currently receiving some sort of public assistance through the Tulare County aid systems. Um, we're also the largest employer in the county with approximately four thousand seven hundred and eighty employees. And when we look at this, we see that we really have the ability to make a huge difference because we practically could have one employee have an impact on almost one each square mile to cover the entire county. That just goes to speak volumes with, uh, the impact that we potentially have. As an academy, uh, this year, we thought it would be important to come up with a mission statement to kind of solidify what it is that we want to do. And that mission statement that we developed is committing to the highest standards of excellence and innovation in serving Tulare County employees while meriting trust, respect, and support from the residents of Tulare County. We value collaboration, volunteerism, and teamwork while enhancing and establishing bond within our community. Really focusing on the innovation piece, that was something that we wanted to bring this year. Um, for example, if you haven't noticed, this, um, format that we're using to present the, um, project to you is rather no- known as Prezi. It's just a different type of PowerPoint, a little bit interesting. And we're also doing some things that we'll talk about later in the project, um, presentation, um, in terms of utilizing, um, tablets to register people for our project and also, um, utilizing the hashtag to brand and promote our project. So we're just really trying to bring in those components to get people excited. For our vision, uh, we envision a volunteer challenge. Uh, this challenge is a three-month challenge that will kick off October first this year, and it'll go through the end of the year, end of December. And the intent of the challenge is really to just encourage community volunteerism in our communities, um, specific engagement and that sort of thing with our employees on their personal time. Um, in order to do that and successfully do that, we are going to be providing the county staff with resources on different various opportunities that exist throughout the county by reaching out to the different nonprofits and collecting data. Um, we're also going to be, um, utilizing an online tracking mechanism to, um, measure the participation and, um, also outcome. One of the most important things we thought we needed to do in order to ensure the success of our project is to come up with some goals. And, um, the first goal that we developed was that we wanted to motivate Tulare County staff to engage in volunteer activities and service projects throughout the county. Um, our second goal was to increase county staff retention and attract future leaders by encouraging staff to become more involved and connected to the community. Um, a lot of us know as, uh, as the younger generations are coming into the workforce, um, one of the things that we hear, especially in the, um, nonprofit and private or public industries, is that people really want to be involved and make a difference in the job that they're doing. And so we just thought that this, um, would lend itself to that and hopefully attract people and also just retain the staff that we currently have by giving them that outlet and opportunity to do something and really make a difference and feel good about themselves. Lastly, our, um, third goal was to promote Tulare County as an organization that is really invested in improving the quality of life in our community. We talk about it a lot, um, as various agencies and within our, our respective departments. But being able to take it a little step further and really reach out and have that personal impact, we feel that this is something that we can also achieve. We included a quote as part of our project. This quote is from Dr. Dorothy Height, and she was an, um, social activist from the nineteen thirties. She was actually awarded the Presidential Medal of Freedom as well as the Congressional Medal, Gold Medal. And her quote is, "Without community service, we would not have a strong quality of life. It's important to the person who serves as well as the recipient. It's the way in which we ourselves grow and develop." We chose this as a group because we really think that this just encompasses everything that we're really trying to do. With that, I'm going to hand this, um, next few slides over to Yessenia.
So our goal here is to get staff involved. We need to engage this, um, all of those four thousand eight hundred employees that we have here. So some of the things that we plan on doing, which she kind of mentioned on, was to create a friendly competition between departments. We're hoping that that kind of, um, I guess competitive spirit comes out in our staff and that we plan on having, um, spotlight staff submitting success stories. Um, and we'll use that hashtag as part of that, which I'll explain in a minute. Um, we want to have contests within the county. Uh, maybe the department has the most volunteer hours or hours served. We have the, um, maybe the individual recognized who, um, has, has the most hours of community service. And then staff and team recognition as well. So this quote here says, "Those who volunteer have lower rates of depression and greater functional ability." Um, and this is part of the reason we'll be at the Health, Health and Wellness Fair tomorrow, because we want to affect our employees' morale. We want to make them, um, happy to come to work. And sometimes doing those things in your off time are going to put that extra hop in your step when you go to work. And we're hoping to see that with our employees in the workplace. Okay. So here is where our fun hashtag comes in. Um, we are a new generation with a whole new language, um, that we speak, and a lot of that comes online with social media. So, um, we've created this new brand of, you know, T, uh, TC Volunteers. We plan on using the media to help get this out there because we want to influence our staff, all four thousand some of them. But we also want to really impact the whole community and get everybody involved if possible. Um, we know that people are, are motivated in different ways. There's intrinsic motivation, which most people who already serve already have that. They do this service because it makes them feel good. But we also want to have that recognition and, and help those with, um, that are extrin- extrinsically motivated as well, with this competition as well. Um, we know that, uh, doing good brings you good karma, for lack of a better word. Um, and that's contagious. It really is. And so we're hoping to get that out there and hopefully try to go viral. So the idea with social media is to, um, have staff share their success stories, share their photos of them doing these service projects um, on Instagram, on, um, Twitter, on Facebook, using this hashtag. The idea behind that is it makes it searchable. So what we can do is, we can search for hashtag Tulare TC Volunteers, and we can see everybody's pictures and stories that they've posted regarding this project. And then it also gets contagious. People start asking, "What is this hashtag? What does it mean? Why are you, why are you posting that?" And the idea is hopefully getting this snowball effect of people wanting to serve within our community. Um, let's see. I didn't, oh, I skipped it for media. Sorry, guys. Um, we, we plan on getting, uh, submitting a press release. Um, we'll be working with the local newspapers. We have one team already, um, that have committed to some hours. So we're hoping to get the, um, Visalia Times Delta to follow them around and do a little story on, um, on their service project. Um, let's see. Sorry, guys. Um, w- what we really want is to get our community involved, not just the staff, but those that are being served, that maybe eventually get them to want to be those that are serving as well. So, um, that's part of the idea behind that, um, the social media. We use internal newsletters and liaisons. Uh, as some of you may have seen, I, I'm not sure if you have access to our, um, Great Vine Newsletter, that's been shared. Some of our own internal departments have also included, um, this information just to get it out to the staff. And lastly, as we've mentioned, we'll be at the Health Fair tomorrow. I figured what a, what a great opportunity here to be able to impact the, the mental health and wellbeing of our staff. So some, oh, I forgot to bring it, but some of our, um, ideas were to have the very first-ever selfie station for Tulare County. The idea, thank you, is for staff to be able to take pictures, pledge hours, and fill out these little signs um, with different reasons for why they volunteer or what volunteering means for them. Um, and take a picture and start sharing them online, getting them out there, getting people asking questions. Um, and so that would be a fun way to get people involved and using our hashtag to share. And then also we have these buttons, which I believe we have one for each of you. Um, and those that pledge hours, we plan on giving them one of these buttons that they can write down the hours that they pledge in. They go back to their works, workplaces, and people might ask, "What, what does this button about?" If they didn't make it to our booth, then they, they get to tell their story about who they want to volunteer for and what kind of hours they're pledging and, um, hopefully get more excitement involved with, with this project. So we hope that you guys, like, we know you do a lot for the county, but we also would, would love and encourage you to pledge some hours as part of our volunteer project as well.
Okay, ask a question. Is this for the three months or is this?
This is, we have a thr- the challenge is for three months. It is, um, for October through December.
A little bigger then.
Uh, I, I was just going to, I, you know, I'm a lawyer by, by trade, and I, I, I've looked for a definition of hashtag. And, you know, I mean, it's hashtag this and it's hashtag that, and I feel like it should be like, it's like exclamation points, a precursor to, to what's coming next. But I've never heard anybody, I don't, Vanderpoel, don't look this way.
I, I was just going to say, Mr. Chairman, that has nothing to do with you being a lawyer. That just has something to do with age, and I looked all four of them.
So I'm looking to these young ladies for a definition of, of hashtag.
I don't know that I know what the actual definition of the hashtag is, but the idea behind it is to give, to categorize your posting or your, whatever it is you have to say or your picture, and make it searchable. Um, so the idea here is they just, somebody will just type that, hashtag Tulare County Volunteers. And it's kind of like a keyword.
Co- Google will bring up something then when you put that.
Right. So what happens is every single person who's publicly posted a picture and they've typed in TC Volunteers or, um, a story or a post in any form, and they type that in there, it makes it searchable so that we can see all of them. But you have to type that in there. And some people get creative with them, and sometimes they get long and crazy.
My daughter, when she got married, she hashtagged everything. I had no idea what it meant. But, okay. All right. Thank you. Any, uh, questions, comments by members? Mr. Vanderpoel, I will let you speak now.
Yeah, I, no, no more sarcastic comments about the age of my colleagues. But, um, I just really want to commend this leadership class. I think it's really a great thing to, uh, uh, inspire yourselves by inspiring all of your fellow employees and hopefully having an impact in the whole county. I think it's really, uh, uh, outside-the-box thinking, and, and I commend you for, uh, uh, coming up with this and your commitment to serving and to, uh, making a difference in the county through volunteerism. I think that's just outstanding. And, uh, I really do think this leadership program within the county, uh, family, uh, is, is just a great way to, uh, take advantage of the leadership skills and the leadership willingness within, uh, our employees to, to make these great projects and make Tulare County an even better place to, to live, work, and, uh, uh, be a part of the family. So I really thank you and I wish you a lot of luck, and I'm sure that there will be lots of hashtags and lots of volunteer hours from this board.
Thank you. So, um, just to kind of further, uh, talk about that too, so just so everybody knows how that's going to work. There will be a survey that's going to be distributed at the Health Fair tomorrow. And that survey's going to allow staff to sign up and pledge their hours, and that's when they'll be giving the, the pins. But the survey links will be available, um, for the, throughout the next three months. So people that come in later or hear about it later will all have the opportunity to get on that link and, and set their pledge hours as well. So, uh, we're going to wrap it up and, uh, basically just want to, you know, we really want to accomplish our goals. This is exactly what, um, what you guys are talking about. This is what we want to do. We are passionate about this. We do want to make a difference, and we see the need for it, and that's why we're here. And as a group, as a, as a leadership group that can go out there and encourage our peers, we're confident that we can, um, get this to catch fire and, and encourage our fellow, um, hard to fight. And also really the impact that it can have, because most people don't go out and volunteer by themselves. They invite their friends and their families that may not necessarily work for the county, but they're going to be out there with them, uh, side by side. And that's really what it's about, just bringing this county, uh, together and in the community and out there helping. Um, we will have data collection and analysis mechanisms available through the Survey Monkey. Um, in addition to registering and pledging their hours, they'll be given an opportunity to log their hours every month through Survey Monkey to keep track of the amount of hours that they, um, did. So just because they pledged this amount of hours doesn't mean they have to stick to it. We're hoping that they'll do at least the amount that they pledged, but we're really hoping that they'll exceed that amount as well. And we'll be checking in with everybody, um, giving little stories and tidbits here and there, sharing success stories as we go along to keep that motivation going and encouraging, um, the staff that maybe aren't participating yet and showing them like, "Hey, this is what your peers are doing out there and your fellow, um, colleagues at other departments." Um, and ultimately, at the end of all this, we really hope that this is a success and something that we could possibly, uh, consider evaluating for a future actual policy that could be adopted by the county if it is successful, if people do, um, participate in it and it has a positive impact. That's our end game and our end goal, and, and hopefully we'll see. So we're really looking forward to, um, seeing you guys again in January. And on behalf of the Leadership Academy, I just want to tell you guys thank you so much for giving us this opportunity to present to you. And, uh, we hope it's a success. Thank you.
I want to echo the comments that were made by Supervisor Vanderpoel. You know, we very much appreciate you, uh, all being engaged in this leadership class because it is an extracurricular. It's nothing you, you take on your own initiative to do. It takes a lot of time of your own away from work and so forth. And as I look at the group that stood up, you know, it's, it's a bit, a bit of succession planning. Because as I look at, they, they're all a little on the younger side, and we have a lot of baby boomers that are going to be, you know, retiring over the years. And so you are in leadership positions now, but you're probably going to be looking at even greater leadership responsibilities in the future. So preparing yourself for that by, you know, availing yourself of these, of this opportunity is not only beneficial to the county, I hope you find it beneficial to yourselves and will be helpful for your, your, your future, uh, work with the county as well. Any other questions or comments? Supervisor Cox, leaning forward, let, then I'll get you.
Well, I'll, I'll allow the age to go first.
Yeah, I am the senior colleague, anyway.
He, he started it.
No, we've seen these programs, uh, work greatly in our cities, Leadership Visalia, Leadership Porterville. Why not Leadership County? I mean, draw everybody together and, uh, become more close-knit. We have so many different departments. You've got a group, good group here from every angle. So, uh, good luck to you. I think it's going to be good for the county. I think it's, uh, going to be a program that will continue on. This won't just be the first year of it. So good luck to everybody. I, I hope this thing works, and I hope that everybody gets a lot out of it, including us. Thank you.
Supervisor Cox.
Is it appropriate that I issue a challenge? I, well, I'm going to, whether you say, uh... So I, I will, uh, I will fi- figure this out. December's a great month for me because a lot of you know I get to put on a different color suit and volunteer several times in the city of Visalia. So I think I'm going to have more than a hundred hours on here for this three-month period. So I'm going to challenge any of my board members to beat me, and if you beat me, I'll take you to lunch, place of your choice.
Oh, whoa, whoa, whoa.
Will you pay?
And I will pay.
Well, and I just want to say that I would, I could extend an opportunity for those who are looking for putting a number of hours in because I have a golf tournament coming up. It's a charitable golf tournament in Dinuba, October third. Just see me after the meeting, and I can help you get a lot of hours on your chart, uh, chasing a little white ball around for a very good cause. But that's, but just, I'm, you know, joking, and not, in a way I'm not, because I mean, it is true. But it is, it is a way of looking at opportunities because they are there. If you look for opportunities of service, they are very broad. And it can be as much as charitable golf tournaments to soup lines to... as charitable golf tournaments to soup lines to, you know, everything in between. If you look for opportunities to serve, they present themselves every day. So my hat's off to you, and I also appreciate your, you said you're focusing on innovation. To me, that's the key word for Tulare County, for any enterprise going forward is innovation. We always need to be keeping our eyes open to opportunities to do things differently, more efficiently, more effectively, more compassionately. So my hat's off to you, congratulations on your project, and good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we'll come to public comment period, which is the time during our meeting in which we invite the public to come forward with any items that are not on today's agenda but are within the county's jurisdiction. Is there anyone wishing to address the board this morning? Yes, sir. Please give us your name and address, and we limit our, we'd like to have it for our records. Not that we're gonna come to your house and give you a problem, but also we limit you to three minutes as well.
My name is Bob Patel, I'm the IT Tech Manager for Century 21. I live in Visalia. The reason I'm here is I'm also, last year I got involved with the Walk Dead Alzheimer that was held at Moonies Grove Park, and this year I decided to take over as a chair for Tulare Kings Walk Dead Alzheimer, which is October 3rd, and I'm here to cordially invite you and the county individuals who are here to attend. It will start at eight o'clock, ceremony at nine thirty, and the walk begins at ten a.m. And last year, month before the event, we were at about $4,000 that we had raised. This year, we're already almost at sixteen, and on plan to double it, and so we may potentially have almost eight hundred people, and next year we're slated to have almost two thousand people. So it's a huge event, which is held at Moonies Grove Park, and I like what the Leadership Council is doing, because I'm also involved with the senior care organizations, and I started working on a website called Getting Involved Rocks. And because, the reason why is because every time I scheduled an event or volunteered, I had no idea somebody else was having the same event the same day. So, and one thing that upset me is none of the charities or organizations are communicating that says, hey, let's work together and let's have your event in mind, but let's not conflict on the same day. So I'd like to see, maybe down the line, if I could help these guys, individuals, with my website and see if we can work together and, like I said, make the county better and make the walk better. So I have some flyers I can hand over, and we are also taking donations and got breakfast lines there. We'll be having a full pancake breakfast, there'll be no charge, a hundred percent free, so we'd love to see you guys there.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming this morning, and good luck with your efforts, and we appreciate you taking the effort to be here and also to chair that event. Very good.
Thank you.
Could you publicly announce the date and time again?
Yes, October 3rd, Moonies Grove Park at eight a.m. Thank you.
Same day as our golf tournament.
We'll have to plan that better.
But that does happen, there's conflicts in every situation. All right. Anyone else wish to address this? Close the public comment period and bring it back to the board then for our consent calendar. And item six through twenty, are there any items which members of the board wish to handle separately, Supervisor Vanderpoel?
Mr. Chair, not necessarily to handle separately, I just want to call attention to item number seven, which is the Government 101, or Government Training for Special District Board Members. I think that's really great to see that the county is continuing this effort. I know that there are a significant number of Special District Board Members throughout the county that do not receive any sort of training before they begin their positions as elected leaders within their community or jurisdiction, and this isn't all-inclusive necessarily, but it sure is a great opportunity for newly-elected officials or sitting elected officials who might need a little bit of brush-up training to get some from some professionals here locally. So I commend all the attorneys and staff that will be volunteering their time to put this on. I think it's a great thing. That's all I wanted to say. And with that, I would move for approval of the ballot.
Anybody in the public wish to ask about any of the items on our consent calendar? I thought somebody wanted to know about the egg grater that the sheriff office wants.
Well, second.
Motion by Supervisor Vanderpoel, second by Supervisor Cox, please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous. And that will now take us to our public hearing, timed item, a request from the Fire Department to conduct a public hearing for fire hazard abatement cost recovery. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Cindy Allen, I'm a fire inspector for Tulare County Fire. TCFD is requesting the board to order the costs associated with the abatement of fire hazards to be recorded in the office of the county recorder as a lien. The contractor's cost plus administrative fees came to a total of $11,342.20 for the cleanup of ten parcels throughout Tulare County. We request that the county auditor place such costs on the county tax roll as a special assessment. Last, we request the board to adopt the attached resolution with Exhibit A, the parcel analyst. Contractor's cost was $7,862.20, administrative fees was $3,480. Have any questions for me this morning?
Any questions?
One quick question.
Cox.
This Diamond Head Ventures, is that just a new name for the other property owner out in Seville that for years we saw them coming through? Is that just a new name?
You know, it's, in the last...
It appears to be the same lots.
Right, it is the same lots. I don't know how long they've been going under Diamond Head. I do know that we have had some new owners out there recently, but their letters did come back this year, so it looks like they may be moving on.
That was frustrating for you, and we've done this every year that I've been here, and to see that property management company come through every year, and then now it looks to be the exact same lots with just a different name.
Absolutely.
Frustrating.
Very frustrating.
Anybody else, any other comments?
Yeah, I have a question. If these same lots are coming through every year, and they're not paying their assessments, when do we put them for sale? Five years, so some of these people have been here for five years.
It's five years, and I guess it's the sixth year we actually put them for sale, according to our auditor, controller, tax collector.
Register of voters.
Yeah, COG, so they have to go uncollected for five years, and that's a year or two after that, if it's worth doing.
And then we hope we collect enough to recover our costs. Okay, begin the public hearing at this time. Anyone wishing to address this matter is welcome to come forward this time, give us your name and address. We will proceed, move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Ennis, second by Supervisor Ashida, please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous, and we will now go to our untimed items. Item number thirty, twenty-one is a presentation by General Services Capital Projects outlining the contractor pre-qualification process for the South County Detention Facility. John?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. John Hess with the, what's going on here? County Administrative Office, General Services Department. This morning, Kyle Taylor and I will do a presentation regarding the South County Detention Facility pre-qualification process, as well as an appeal that we received on that process from Elsie Nelson. So the, a little bit of background before we get into the presentation on the project, it is a $56 million project, that's our most recent cost estimate, and that includes five alternate additives. Five hundred and fourteen-bed jail facility in the city of Porterville, over a hundred thousand square feet structure with, including some outside buildings, some maintenance facility buildings. It includes, of course, a variety of uses, cells, of course, administration, medical and support facilities, kitchen laundry utilities. We are working with the State Fire Marshal and the Department of Finance right now to obtain approval to proceed to bid. We're hoping to bring that to your board on October 6th, Pennsylvania California approvals. If we receive those on time, we hope to then be in construction January or February 2016. So before we chose to do the pre-qualification process, we kind of analyzed the advantages and the disadvantages of the project. The major advantages are that ultimately it results in a qualified pool of bidders for the project. This is a large project, high dollars, complex construction, and it also is very unique in that it's a detention facility construction environment. So but for those reasons, we wanted to ensure that the bidders that would ultimately bid on the project had the right licenses, had experience, and also had met certain criteria that we had previously established. The process is utilized commonly throughout our local counties. We contacted Kings County, and they were very happy with the process and highly recommended it, and it's also commonly used throughout the jail construction program throughout the state for the reasons listed here. It is, as with many things, not without its disadvantages. So the two major disadvantages that we identified as we were moving forward are, first, that by nature of limiting the pool of prospective bidders, you may result in higher bids. The theory being that if you're going to have, you know, fifteen, twenty, and you reduce that down to ten, twelve, or in our case, we had twelve and reduce it to eight, you could result in higher bids. And that's ultimately something we are aware of, and that's something that we knew going forward. The hope is that we can see some savings due to better time performance as a result of evaluating previous experience and making sure that they have jail experience as preferred.
That's jail construction experience.
Correct. Also seeing, evaluating claims, criterias, and change orders, and disputes, things of that nature that do cost time and do cost money for the county in the long run. And the second big concern is that it reduces the likelihood of local bidders, seeing as how many local bidders may not have those specific experiences and may not have the higher bidding bond capacities and so forth. Again, another thing we were aware of going forward, our hope on that is that we can still realize some local impacts through the use of local sub-trades, subcontractors for specific trades, purchasing of local materials, and certainly the employment of local workers. That's, those are things that ultimately give economic benefit to the contractor, because they, you know, cut costs for transportation and things of that nature for the prime contractor. So we did select the process, and Kyle Taylor will now give a little brief background as to what we did through the process and the dates and those sorts of things. Thereafter, Elsie Nelson will have an opportunity to provide their appeal.
Good morning. So we released the pre-qualification package on June 29th of this year. We received twelve submittals by the deadline, which was July 31st. There was a ranking committee that ranked all of the submittals received by the contractors that consisted of five members. Once all individual scores were rated, we met on August 12th and compiled all the scores together. It was a committee decision that a minimum score of eighty percent was required to meet the pre-qualification. Eight of the twelve submittals received met the eighty percent threshold. An appeal was provided for within the pre-qualification package if one of the people that did not meet the pre-qualification wanted to appeal that decision. Of the four contractors that weren't qualified, one did, or weren't pre-qualified, one did submit an appeal. Here's the scores, available points, and the percentage, and as you can see, Dale Adkins, Elsie Nelson, Roblin, and Seal's Bill didn't meet the eighty percent threshold, and the contractor that did submit appeals, Elsie Nelson, and they had a combined committee score of sixty-six percent. So as I previously mentioned, pursuant to the process, each disqualified contractor does have a right to appeal. Elsie Nelson submitted their paperwork within the amount of time on, you know, by August 18th to have their appeal heard, and staff does recommend upholding the committee's decision to disqualify Elsie Nelson. And I will now turn the floor over to Elsie Nelson, so the board can hear their appeal.
Morning, sir. You can use your microphone, either one works.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Michael Lewison, I'm the Director of Business Development at Lewis Nelson &amp; Sons. Lewis Nelson &amp; Sons has been serving the Valley communities for more than eighty-five years, predominantly as a public works builder. We've done correctional work and schoolwork, all but exclusively focused. The only large project of size we've done is at the Lebec border, so mostly in the counties serving this area. We've done work for local high school districts in Tulare and some other things, we've done a little bit of private work here in Visalia as well over the years. Mr. Taylor did mention that there are some disadvantages with this process, that it can raise the bids and it can exclude local contractors. I'll take on the latter one first. The last several years, the focal point of this pre-qualification was a seven-year period, the last seven years in this community, in these communities have been rather rough. There have not been a lot of projects out there. So saying, what have you done in the last few years, really immediately excludes pretty much everyone local. We have, we were fortunate enough during the downturn to have been awarded what was probably the largest correctional project in the vicinity, and that was the Mendota Correctional Facility and Correctional Camp. In our, in our proposal or request for pre-qualification, we did submit that project, and that project was $115 million on the first part, and then we were separately awarded as part of the same contract, admittedly, separately awarded by the Department of Corrections, which is the federal Department of Justice, a separate project for $23 million, based on our skill and success in the first project. And I'll get back to that in a second, if I may, but I wanted to bring that up because as a smaller contractor, we're not a Sun, we're not a Walsh, companies that are multi-state do things all over the country. If New York picks up a little faster than the Central Valley or the Midwest picks up a little faster, then they're gonna start getting work in the timeframe more rapidly than we are. What the process does disadvantage us, holds a great disadvantage for us, is that we almost become excluded from participating in these projects, and then when the next one comes along and they say, well, what did you do in the last three years? Well, we would have done a really great job in Tulare, but we were excluded because we don't have as much volume of experience. I submit to you, and I'm sure all of you have long and successful professional careers, that your experience with one large example doesn't go away. It doesn't go away if it was five years ago or ten years ago, you know what you're doing, and our senior professionals all have now all told, well, in excess of $300 million in correctional experience, and if you add inflation into that going back twenty years, it's probably substantially more than that in today's $2,015. There's no question that the contractors who were pre-qualified are quality firms. We know of each and every one of them. As I said, most of them are multi-state entities. Almost all of them are based outside of the San Joaquin Valley, I believe with the exception of one. I don't believe any of them have principals who have businesses in Tulare County, enter Tulare County taxpayers, not that that was part of the pre-qualification, but that is a separate point. We also recognize it's a very cumbersome and challenging process for the department to go through. It's a lot of work, the packages that were submitted, I have a copy of ours, basically that big, and there's a lot of reading, a lot of material to go through, and unfortunately, I'm sure all the answers are not the same, so there's a lot to go through. One thing that did kind of trouble us, and I'm sorry, I have my copy here and I have a separate copy, there were apparently five committee members who went through each of seven, ten sections and scored them independently. It's almost like when you watch the Olympics and you watch the skating and the scores come up, oh, six oh, six oh, five nine, five eight, five seven, and there's always that five six or something like that. The criteria was purported to be objective, I'm sure that there were numbers. We have seen packages very similar to this pre-qualification package. It's actually very similar to what the county Department of Education uses, almost identical, except they obviously don't ask for correctional experience. But typically, we're given scoring parameters going into it, and quite honestly, if it was said to us, you know, hey, unless you've done three $50 million prison projects, don't apply, we probably would have made a different decision. I admit that that decision probably wouldn't have been, okay, we won't submit. It probably would have been, hey, maybe we should reach out to the department, maybe the board informally and say, and bring up most of the issues that I'm talking about at that time earlier, but that wasn't done. Have they, do they have the breakdown of how the individual committee member?
Yes, we do.
You do? Okay. So one of the things that we noticed was coming out of the first page on a So one of the things that we noticed was coming out of the first page and a half or so, we actually were pretty much the highest rated, if not, we were one or two in that situation. Then you get to the section called disputes, which involves lawsuits and legal actions. And admittedly, we've had some, and I don't know what the other contractors have had in total. We have a handful, but they basically arise from two separate situations, two different Without getting into the specifics of them, one involved a project which got shut down, which we were terminated for convenience, and which we weren't paid for, and none of our subcontractors were paid for. And that brought up a whole bunch of legal actions so that everybody could protect themselves and their balance sheets. And a lot of that's still pending. And we're just, on that one, just asking to get paid. And quite frankly, in the business of a general contractor, ninety-six, seventy percent of what you get paid goes on to the people, the subcontractors who are doing the work with you. But again, in a lot of these, it seemed like one or two committee members were just way outside the pack. So it's difficult to understand, you know, if the criteria was, "Hey, if you've got two lawsuits, you're going to lose ten points," then the score should pretty much be the same, but they're not. So there was certainly a subjectivity in looking at the objective nature of it. Where we really, where we really felt some heat on this thing was if you get to Section C on the last page of the tally sheet, compliance with occupational safety and health laws. We find this challenging a lot. This is something that's unique to California companies. Our principal owns a number of businesses in California, including a car dealership here in Tulare County and Visalia. California law requires us, for the employee modification rate, which is an insurance thing, talking about your workers' compensation, and how you're rated as far as it being a safe company, how many accidents you've had, how many hours have been worked. It requires an owner, companies that are owned by substantially the same principal or same principal entity, to combine all the workforce, regardless of what industry they're in, into a single calculation. And that calculation forces, and then each firm, so if you went and asked a restaurant business that's under our same ownership, "What's your EMR?", it would be one one five, which, or excuse me, one one three, which is what ours is. But if you look at Lewis Nelson &amp; Sons as a standalone, our EMR is actually point eight five, and one being average. So if you say, of all the construction firms out there, the average for safety is one, we're a point eight five. So we're actually a safe company, but we always get dinged on this in these pre-qualifications. We submit a letter, which was in our package, but typically, we find that the merit of the letter, the merit of the subject gets avoided.
Excuse me, are you saying that it's the, you're lumped in together with your subcontractors?
No, sir. No, sir. Our principal, Mr. Nelson, owns many businesses.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
So all of his employees-
All of his.
Are together.
Gotcha.
And what happens, basically, if you look at an industry like construction, the safety practices and history and records of incidents and what those incidents are, are very different than that of a restaurant business, or a hotel business, or an automobile dealership, or a property management firm. But by California law, and it's, without digressing, it's probably a very good law because it keeps nefarious people from lumping in employees that have, that are in very dangerous businesses and payroll at very safe businesses and throwing off our whole workers' compensation system. So on the whole, it's probably a very good thing for all of us. But it does have this effect that it takes our very safe company at a point eighty-five, which is fifteen percentage points better than average, and throws us up almost fifteen points above the average, so we look to be an unsafe company. And we did take a lot of heat, if you look across the board on that, we were one of the lower scorers, second lowest scorer on that particular area. There was a subject of some airport violations. Both of those were settled with no admission of guilt and no statement of guilt. Those were just field incidents, and those are things where you don't want to fight with the state, you'd rather settle those out. I understand from a letter that I had sent to Mr. Taylor, on the next section, there was a section about building information modeling experience and level of development. It's true that our firm has less experience than some of these multi-state firms. It's, I'm probably throwing out terms that are hashtag-esque for the board. Building information modeling is a technology that is used in design and construction more and more. And basically, it can span anywhere from the initial conceptual through design, development, and construction. Most of the work that's being done now is in the design phase, and then a little bit in the pre-construction phase where contractors are looking to make sure that things don't conflict with each other, so you don't build a wall where a pipe is supposed to go, so that you don't have two pipes in the drawings that are going to intersect each other. That's typically where it's used now. I'm not exactly sure of the level of development because I wasn't in the specification. But it's a technology that is growing. I understand the importance of recognizing a skill set with it. We do have some experience and skill set with it, certainly not as much as a Sunt or a Walsh who are doing this in half-billion-dollar projects.
Excuse me, are you referring to what, our thing is called a part three on the-
No, above that.
Prevailing wage-
Prevailing wage and compliance, yeah. Which, again, that's another valid point. There was one question, and apparently, our entire subtraction, from what I understand, from that one question was based on, from that section was based on the one question because, that's what I think I got from the letter. I did skip over one section, too. There was a question about bonding, where we had, again, one committee member who felt very differently than all the others and just said, "Okay, you know, we're going to ding Lewis Nelson &amp; Sons for something on bonding," which I don't understand. We have a fifty-eight million dollar project, we have a hundred and thirty million dollar single project bonding capacity with a hundred and fifty million dollar total capacity. Our bonding company has been our bonding company for ten years, or since two thousand and seven, so maybe eight years. We haven't used anybody else. They bonded us to a hundred and forty million dollars on the Mendota project. And we submitted letters from the Federal Department of Justice saying, you know, how fantastic that project was. That really, that is part three, and I did discuss that earlier, that it is difficult for us to say, "Hey, we have all these big projects," because there just haven't been that many. We've never really expanded outside the area. But again, we do, we do feel that the experience that we've developed at places like Corcoran, at places like Delano, at places like Solano, even though they weren't in the last seven years, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Testman, Mr. Fletcher, the people who lead our company, they haven't forgotten what they've learned from those projects. So in conclusion, I hearken back to the disadvantages. It definitely does eliminate local people. We do feel a little uncomfortable about the objectivity of the criteria because when one committee member says, "Oh, that's worth a thirty-five points," and another one says it's worth five points, it wasn't a criteria that said, "Oh, if there are two of these, it's worth this many points. If there are three, it's worth fewer. If there are four, it's worth nothing." There was subjectivity, and we feel that the way it provided a disadvantage to a local The other thing is, as far as the value of the bids, there's been a lot of movement, not outside the construction of prisons, but just in general, movement to selection of contractors and things like that in the Valley. I would submit, that's one man's opinion based on being in it. What we feel we've seen is an increase in construction costs across the board of ten percent from projects that are traditionally hard bid, that are open to people of qualifying licenses, which are state licensed, whose bonding companies say that will bond them to the value of a particular project. We see that the subcontracted community, especially when larger groups are coming in, doesn't tend to be local subcontractors. They tend to have the people that they work with. Their big contractors work with big electrical subcontractors like Cupertino up north. They work with huge, they mostly will do their own concrete pouring and bring in their own forces. If you look at, case in point, if you look at the High Speed Rail, there's very few tools in the ground subcontractors being hired for the work on that. Most of the general contractors are bringing their own forces for a lot of that work. So that doesn't tend to yield out. The only other thing I'll say about the pricing is about a month and a half ago, seven weeks, there was a pretty similarly sized prison project that bid for North Kern and Wasco. It was actually two sites. We did bid that. We were in the low three. None of your other contractors bid it except for two. One of them was in the low three, but the other one was about ten percent high. So most of the other contractors won't bid it because it's, they know they can't compete with the local contractors. And in fact, of the type of contractors, these multi-states, there were another one or two who bid that project. One of them was ten million dollars high on a fifty million dollar project, bid sixty million dollars, or fifty-seven million dollars to a low bid of forty-seven. That's the price difference. I recognize, you know, is it possible for time delays and things like that? Yeah, there are. When we did Mendota Correctional Facility, we delivered the project four years on the day that it was originally committed, no time extension. It was a hundred and, almost forty million dollar project. The total value of all change orders was less than one percent. Largest change order on the project was a five hundred thousand dollar change order that the Department of Corrections initiated themselves because the window frames in the building were being built by prison industry systems in a different state, and they were behind. They were behind by about six months. Frankly, if we were in the change order business, we probably could have gone after them. We could have said, "Hey, you're going to delay our walls." We had to build the entire facility, tilt up all the walls for multiple buildings. It was over three hundred and fifty thousand square foot project. We could have really held them up for that. What we did was we retooled the way those windows were going to go in the prison. And by the way, this is not like windows in your house, you know? Windows in your house, they have to be sealed tight, you don't want air coming in. These are prison windows. These are make sure nobody gets in, make sure nobody gets out type thing. We worked with the architects, we retooled the whole thing. We were able to put up the walls and wait for the windows to come in four or five months later and put that in. And the only change in the change order was basically the new frames that had to go in the building to maintain security so that the delayed windows could be put in the building. So even that, four tenths of a percent, which was more than justified, and I think a testament to our willingness to work with the owner and help them, that four tenths of a percent pales in comparison to what you might see in your bidding that might be ten, twelve, fifteen percent higher than if you had the locals, the local contractors with the local subcontractors who all know each other, know how to work together, feel comfortable with each other, the subcontractors not saying, "I've never worked with this guy, so I'm going to tack another ten, fifteen percent onto my bid." And you get a better number, and that's what we're seeing. So that's, I thank you for your time.
Any questions, Combs? Thank you.
I do have, I don't know, not for him, I mean, if I can't express what I've expressed to staff many times, I do not like this pre-qualification process that does, and I'm going to focus on the disadvantages page, it does limit our pool of local bidders. It pretty much eliminates them because of many of the reasons that were stated today. Couple things you said, sir, are not true. The local bid is not always the lowest bid. We've seen that with a lot of our road projects and other projects that are happening now. That having been said, I don't like this process. I've expressed that to Mr. Hess, I've expressed that, Mr. Taylor, I've expressed that to Mr. Russo, because we just, we do eliminate a lot of our locals. What happens with these, and I'll call them the big guys, a lot of times, they do bring their own subs, and sometimes, they bring their own subs that are a sub-part of their company. Now, I've not done, I don't believe I ever worked with Lewis C. Nelson before while I was contracting. I did do prison work, I did hospital work, I did major projects that were in the tens of millions of dollars as a subcontractor, but I don't believe I ever did work for you guys. And the way these bids happen is the cost of this project is determined in thirty to sixty minutes. And that's the thirty to sixty minutes before they're supposed to put the bid down in front of these gentlemen. All the bids come in, everybody plays the game, they wait until the last possible minute. So unless this general contractor says, "If you don't have your bid to me one hour before the bid is due, I'm not going to consider your bid." So unless they have some established rules like their with their subs, these jobs are literally determined in less than an hour, and some of them in less than five to ten minutes, because people will be waiting in the room, waiting to write the bid amount on their bid documents. So I know how these bids work. Nothing has changed in the fifteen or so years that I was doing this type of a public work. But one of the things that always bothered me is these large contractors would bring in their own subs from outside of the area, and a lot of times, they were a sub-part of their company. They might have been removed once or twice, but they were part of their company, and there was a lot of collusion going on. So I don't like this process at all. I don't like the process of us eliminating any local contractors whatsoever. Because when you pick up those, all of those bids, and you look down at all the subs, probably ninety percent of those subs are going to be the same unless there's an agreement with the general contractor and a sub that, "I'm going to use you, you know, regardless of what your bid is," and they'll put their name in there. So I don't like this. I don't think we ought to eliminate any of our local contractors through this process. And I would support letting all twelve of these contractors, even though there was one that was obviously probably not qualified, listening to them having done a hundred and forty million dollar project in the last, you know, five years or so, and having the bonding capacity, and having the bonding capacity is a big deal. If you can bond for a project, that means you, you're worth that money. And that means, and I was involved in a project, in a prison project, where the bonding company had to step in and finish the project. And I can tell you, as a subcontractor, that project kicked into high gear, it was finished ahead of schedule, and I was paid as a subcontractor better than what the general contractor was paying me. So I think there's enough built-in protections with bonding companies watching over these projects because they're not on the hook, the contractor's on the hook because the bonding company is going to bond them for what they can get out of the contractor. So don't like this process at all. I do not support.
My comment, and perhaps our staff would like to respond to it, was the thing that caught my attention was how, if you have a situation where all five members are discounting a particular applicant based upon, they're looking at the same documentation and they come up with a similar number, but we had cases where one member would be at zero and other members would be at thirty. I mean, was there, was there a discussion amongst the members about why they were coming up with these numbers, and either to try to support their position or get some buy-in? Because it seems odd that you'd have these kind of huge disparities. And to me, it calls into question the objectivity of it, because how do you have these great disparities?
So to speak generally to the process, if Kyle could address any specific questions on the actual scores, the process is by design very thorough and very exhaustive as to multiple dimensions of the contractors' qualifications for the project. So the bidding is one of them, past disputes and claims is certainly one of them, ability to do construction projects of this size absolutely is one of them. And that's primarily by nature to address that particular issue, that whenever you get five individuals together to rate objective criteria, by nature, some people are just tougher graders and some people are going to be harder graders. And although the criteria is objective, the process is made very thorough for that reason. As you can see, there was over a hundred individual line items that had to be rated and ranked in order for the totality to be decided. There was an extensive conversation on the five raters. After all, the individual rating had been done and submitted and tallied, the five raters came together and extensively discussed all of the different discrepancies, why individuals may be off on particular items from maybe what would be considered the center of the app.
Any other questions or comments?
I have a question.
Mr. Vice President.
I noticed under disputes that your firm-
Yes, sir.
Did not fare real well.
That's correct.
Can you expand on that?
So we did have two owner involved that we reported and four subcontractor involved. Those were all actually equally one owner and two subcontractor, each for two different projects. So the events of having multiple actions-
So, the events of having multiple actions basically come from two projects. To reiterate what I said earlier, one of them involved a project outside the valley in the Tehachapi area. The owner reportedly ran out of funds, the project stopped. We were terminated for convenience, which, Supervisor Cox, please correct me if I'm erroneous on this, because my experience is not as long as you are. But convenience is a thing in the contract where the owner can basically say, look, we've got nowhere to go with this, we don't want an argument, we've basically got to shut everybody down or shut you down, and we've just got to stop. And that was, our contract was canceled. The owner did not pay us. It was a lot of money. I think that our action is, in that particular case, just slightly over $1 million. Two of the subcontractor involved lawsuits involve about 60% of that money subcontractors coming to us and saying, hey, you got to pay us for that money. And our contracts do say that we pay when we get paid, but the subcontractor is in a tight bind in that particular circumstance.
What you're telling us is that basically that was one project?
That was one project. The other project was a similar thing, the actual details were different. If you were to look at the actual, what we reported in the document, we basically, the owner and the architect were, it was a personality issue mostly, and it essentially just quickly made its way to mediation. At that point, it was completely settled. We got paid everything.
May I interject? I, just going from memory of, and this may be a different company, but I remember the name Nelson involved in building schools in Fresno County and being engaged in, I thought, multiple lawsuits. Is this the same company?
There was one, yes. And I would, the famous lawsuit involved the Clovis Unified School District and Buchanan High School. And at the end of the day, they moved the case up to Merced, and the jury found in favor of Louis C. Nelson and Sons, not the district. There was a substantial award made to the benefit of our firm from the district. And I don't know if anybody recalls, I'm from outside the area, so I wasn't here at that time, but I have done my research. They polled the jurors afterwards, and they were, basically said that, they basically said that they believed the contractor and not the executives from the school district.
Okay. Supervisor Vanderpoel.
I want to speak, but I know Gene's been trying to lean. Go ahead if you want to.
Yeah, Gene Rousseau, CEO. I just want to remind the board that, you know, this pre-qualification process is something that was recommended by Vanner, or CM. Vanner is the CM for the state for its prison system. And they use a similar process in Kings County to vet the bidders and what have you. And we think this has gone well. The whole idea is to, you know, as on page three of the pros and cons, there are always pros and cons to everything you do. But the group that we put together, you know, went through a detailed, you know, John kind of interplayed it somewhat, there are 100 lines that were gone through and scrutinized, and we came up with the grading that we did. So, to come up with eight, eight bidders to make it through the process is pretty good. We, and again, this is something that we've worked closely with Vanner on. It worked out well in Kings. The pricing in Kings was competitive, and we expect and hope the same for our project come January.
Supervisor Vanderpoel.
Yeah, I was just going to lean in and say, you know, thank you, Gene, for bringing up the point that this just takes it from 12 and narrows it down to eight. There's still going to be a selection between eight different firms if this were to move forward. You know, I don't really think that it's government's job to be non-objective. We should be objective. We should be very transparent in what we do and how we do it. I think that the fact that we had five different people look at this, and, you know, hopefully they were fair in the process, but when you have a total of five different minds looking at the same proposals to put forth scores and then have them be average to get to this conclusion, I have to feel like that has a certain level of objectivity that we would expect from government. And, you know, I think that if this was, if we were dealing with all Tulare County money on the table here, all local money on the table, I would be more enforcement, enforcing of seeing that local firms got these contracts because it's local money, and it should go back to local firms specifically. But this is predominantly state money, and so my local advocacy for local firms, making sure that we give them that leg up. Look, in Measure R and on certain road projects that we do, I'm all about local preference points being given to local contractors. But I think this is a little bit of a different situation, I will say, and I think that it's just important that we put a lot of faith and trust in Vanner, our construction manager, when we were first selecting them. This is our second. We got rid of one, and we went with another one that we felt more confident in. And so to turn against their advice and guidance, I would have a hard time doing, but just wanted to throw that out there.
Other comments? Supervisor Sheed?
Mr. Hess, I have a question for you. Of the eight, how many are out of state?
I'll see, Kyle has that information.
I didn't hear you.
He said he's not 100% sure. He thinks a few are out of state.
There was, I know there was one from Utah, and there was a couple from out of California, but the majority were in, are in California.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
No, on these, on these other companies, how many of them had passed litigations against them or were sued? Was any of those that are still in there had litigation?
Yes, there were others that had litigation as well.
As a former contractor, they all have.
Unavoidable. I will say, I think that as a county, and I'm going back historically, looking at our different projects we've done, I think I can, in my memory, we've never had litigation in a construction project. So, I guess I kind of place a premium on the fact that whether, you know, I mean, that speaks well, I think, to the county, and it speaks well to our contractors, that when we've built something, we've not had, there's not been litigation involved. And I think it goes to your construction management firm and all those things working together. But I personally put a great premium on, I mean, win, lose, or draw, lawsuits are time-consuming, they're expensive, and frankly, they're a waste if we, you know, if we can avoid them.
Coming from a lawyer?
Absolutely.
If I might say, we've never had any action in Tulare County that I'm aware of.
Well, I just bring that up as a, from the standpoint that, you know, it is an issue for me. My bigger concern is how, but you were down quite a ways at 66%. We have a guy, we have one company that's a 78. I'm surprised they weren't the ones appealing.
I was too.
Because it's so close to the 80, and in some sense, that 80 is, again, somewhat of a subjective number. You just pick a number and say, well, 80 and above can stay in, and those below can't. And if you're at 78, my gosh, you couldn't find two points someplace among all the various items, among five members. I would be inclined to have given that person a pass, notwithstanding the criteria that were set forth to begin with. But I can see the benefit of doing something like this, in the sense that you don't want to have somebody come in with a low bid, and they're not qualified to do the job. I mean, that can happen. And then you get in litigation, and you have problems getting the project completed and done in a timely fashion. So I certainly see the benefit of it. I just having a little problem with the disparities, I would be, I'd be more comfortable, because I understand what you're saying, some people are harder graders, but when they give a five to one company, and then they give the maximum to the one next door, that's not telling me they're a hard grader, they're making a huge distinction, which not other members of the committee made. And that's the part I struggle a little bit with. It's almost, sometimes you throw out the worst number or something to come up with an average, too. So I'm struggling a little bit with that aspect of this procedure.
And we consider that particular, that phenomenon where people do, because there can be outliers, sometimes people take the highest and lowest and throw those out. We decided, you know, we considered that and said that that wouldn't be the best interest, just because of the extent, that we want to create as thoroughly exhaustive an evaluation as possible on this particular qualification process.
I mean, again...
I am, you know, I can see why our applicant is appealing this. I mean, they, to build that project in Mendota, that's, every bit is bigger, bigger than this project we're talking about. And if they went through that process and they had no difficulties, and to me, that's something that was done fairly recently, so it's not like it's way back in time and sort of picking and choosing, or talking about the last major project they did, and they did it successfully. To me, that's a fairly strong indicator of why we should be considering them as an applicant in this, in our pool. Supervisor Cox, any comments on that?
No, I don't want to exclude any of our local contractors, period.
I'm not talking about, to me, I'm not looking at the local versus non-local aspect. I'm looking at it from an experience standpoint. I mean, again, you can always go back and say, well, yeah, they had litigation 10 years ago, but if you look in the last five years, they haven't had litigation when they've built, they've built large projects, and they've built them successfully, and there's not been any litigation attached to that or any problems. To me, that speaks more loudly than what happened, you know, back in the distant past.
And from that perspective...
I agree with you. I mean, I totally agree with you. I'm just, as I look at these contractors, I know what they've done, I know what they're capable of doing. I don't think we need to exclude them.
And from that perspective, just allowing all of these proposals or bids to move forward...
And they're not all bid, they're not all going to bid.
Just allow them to move forward. I would have no problem with that, because at the end of the day, all we're concerned about is a great project. And I don't know that there's as big of an issue with having everybody in, but I know what you're going to say, and I know the problem that if they're not qualified, they can't, just based on the criteria we're held to as government, of going with the low bidder, if it's someone that's not qualified, we could get screwed.
That is a valid...
And so, we have to be very careful as a board moving forward, and so that would be one reason to advocate for the pre-qualification process. But I do see Supervisor Cox's point. At the end of the day, I don't want to exclude anyone, I don't think that's the role of government to do that, but I do think that there's a process in place that's been recommended by our construction manager, and I do have to put a lot of faith in that, and...
I don't think I have an objection to that. It's not, I don't have a problem with going through this process. I'm having a little trouble with our own process. That's me personally. And I'm wondering, you know, we'll do whatever the board wants here, of course, obviously someone's going to make a motion here in a minute, but one thought would be to allow those that were 66 and above to be able to participate. That would be three different companies. I mean, I wouldn't want to exclude the other members that scored as high or higher than this individual or this company. And I don't know whether that's an option for us to take here today, and council's over there talking right now. I mean, that would be one possibility.
I'll say, I don't think all these companies are going to bid. I mean, you get a long list of companies looking at these jobs all the time. I used to have lists of 12, 15 generals who would bid a big project, who are bidding, whom you would send your numbers to, and less than half of them might turn those in. They're going to end up with, you know, between this process starting and the time that bid goes in, there's probably several other jobs happening and bidding that are going, they're going to get their job and go, okay, that's my job, I can do, or the two jobs I can do, I can't do this, so I won't even bid.
I think we have to...
All these guys aren't going to bid.
I think we have to assume that somebody who went through the process of making this interest is a potential bidder. They may not bid, they may bid, but they're a potential bidder because they took the time to go through this process. Any thoughts?
So, for potential lack of a second, I'd make the motion to...
Here's a second. Gene wants to say something.
One last comment, just to reiterate what I said before, and I don't want to be redundant, is, you know, we're working with Vanner, they have a lot of experience in the state. They are the CM for the state financing of their jail construction. So they know the ins and outs, this is a process that they recommended in Kings. It's consistent with large projects in general. We didn't mean to exclude local bidders. It is what it is. It's a large, John says 56 million, it's, with everything said and done, it's going to be 70-ish. So, this is a huge project, we want to make sure we do it right, and these are the results of our review.
Vanner was not a part of this process, however, were they?
Vanner was one of the committee members on the evaluation.
They were one of the raters.
We don't know what number.
I don't.
But again, they play an important role, they have a lot of experience in the state with jail construction, both at the state and local level, just to reiterate that.
Supervisor Vanderpoel.
Mr. Chair, I would, you know, not to smear or put a black mark on anyone's credentials or ability to get this project done, I think that there are lots of firms that could get a great project done, but we put a process in place, we put faith in our construction manager, and I think that we should move forward with this process that was presented to us by our staff and select option A and uphold staff's finding, would be my motion.
Okay. Do a second.
Did you make a motion?
Yeah.
I second it.
Is that to support the...
Support the staff recommendation?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Please cast your votes. Well, I'm sorry, the motion was by Supervisor Vanderpoel, I got to say this for the record. Motion by Supervisor Vanderpoel, second by Supervisor Innes. Please cast your votes. Mine's a note, too, but I can't seem to, I so rarely, there it is.
It's because you never press it.
I don't run a press note too often.
It's like sunk down.
Okay, so the motion passes three to two. Supervisor Ashida Vanderpoel, Innes voting in favor, Supervisor Cox and Supervisor Worth are voting against. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. It doesn't happen too often in this board, but it's good to show that it does. All right, item number 22 is a request from General Services Property Manager to approve the purchase of property at 5300 West Tulare Avenue. I don't think there'll be as much controversy over this.
No, the design of this one is actually to also solicit public comment, so as Robert Newby's making his way up here, I'll just do a brief introduction. John Hess again, County Administrative Office, General Services Department. This is the second of two presentations that's been made to the board. The first one was done, I did, back in August on the proposed purchase of the Tulare Acres Professional Center here in Visalia. That presentation was to introduce it. This presentation is primarily to seek public comments and to finalize the process. As discussed back in August, the negotiated purchase price is $16.97 million. The building is approximately 180,000 square feet, so about a net of $94 per square foot. There are three existing tenants, and I'm just going to go through some basic details here, three existing tenants, primarily, the largest one, of course, being Cigna Healthcare. The gross rental income at this time is over $1.3 million. Since that presentation, staff has done a notice of intent to purchase property in the Visalia Times Delta, has published that in accordance with state government code. And so with that, I'll hand it over to Robert Newby to handle the details of the requests and public comment period.
Thank you, John.
Morning, Robert.
Good morning.
Pull the microphone down. The giant is not left for the audience.
I get it. I'm trying to handle it like that. Yeah, good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Russo, and Mrs. Bales-Lang. My name is Robert Newby. I am the county property manager and work in general services. And the matter for you today is to accept public comment regarding the acquisition of property at 5300 West Tulare and 801 South Acres in Visalia. There's actually two APNs, so they have different addresses. We are to approve the purchase and sale agreement and joint ESCO instructions between Weingart Foundation and the County of Tulare for a price of $16.97 million. Authorize the chairman to sign the purchase and sale agreement and joint ESCO instructions. Direct the county environmental assessment officer or his designated to file a notice of exemption with the county clerk. Authorize the county administrative officer or his designated to execute all additional documents to complete this purchase of real property. Authorize the county administrative officer or his designated to apply for and submit applications and associated fees to the city of Visalia for any permits as may be required by law to occupy the building for county offices. Authorize county council to sign the grant deed acceptance upon presentation, and direct the auditor to issue warrants or electronic funds transfers to First American Title Company upon request made by the county administrative officer or his designated as provided for in the purchase and sale agreement. Those costs will be for the deposits for the purchase price and for the ESCO across. After this contract is approved, they'll begin a due diligence process for 65 days. And during that time, they'll be reviewing the condition of title report from First American Title Company, reviewing a Phase One environmental assessment report, which was just completed late last week. We'll be reviewing the leases of current tenants, which will be made available upon execution of the contract, and reviewing other contracts in place from vendors supplying services at the property. Are there any questions?
Any questions?
of current tenants, which will be made available upon execution of the contract, and reviewing other contracts in place from from vendors supplying services at the property. Are there any questions?
Any questions? All right. This is not a public hearing, but we allow the public to comment on any matters brought before the board supervisors. So is there anyone here wishing today to speak to this matter? Seeing no one, back to the board for
Mr. Mr. Chair, before we take a vote, I do just want to make the, make a disclosure, although I did speak with county council, and I'm not required to do this at all. I do just want to mention that Matt Graham, the gentleman who's been representing the county in in this action and and serving as our due diligence coordinator, is a family friend, and I do not have any financial interest, financial interest with him, but I do want, just want to make that note.
Not sharing his feed with you?
No.
Having been said, Chair, would a motion to approve purchase of rural property fifty-three hundred West Tulare Avenue?
Second.
And eight hundred one South Acres.
We have a motion by Supervisor Cox.
Oh, second.
To support it, and actually, the second was already made by Supervisor Ashida. Please cast your votes. And the votes are unanimous. Very good. Thank you, gentlemen. I look forward to consummating the sale. Okay, item twenty-three, request from General Services Property Management to approve the purchase of improvements for the price of one hundred thousand dollars located at fifty-nine eleven South Mooney Boulevard from the YMCA. Morning, Dan Johnson.
Yeah, good morning. John Hess, General Services. So this is the purchase of building improvements at Government Plaza that were previously used by the YMCA, still owned by the YMCA, but they are under a separate agreement with the Family Focus. This, there was a land lease that the county entered into with YMCA back in the year two thousand for childcare services at that location. As part of that agreement, the county was just leasing leasing the underlying land, and YMCA had the full responsibility to come in and bring in all the improvements, site, site facility improvements and building improvements. That was fully their responsibility. The facility, as I mentioned, is currently being leased by Family Focus since April sixth of this year. They assumed those responsibilities after YMCA closed their operations. We have a separate lease agreement with them. Also, staff has been working, provide an update, the staff has been working with Family Focus, Human Resources, to ensure that there is solid county interest in those childcare services at competitive rates to our county employees. And surveys have been done, and we've had some informational meetings, so that's a process that's still ongoing at this time. So with that, again, Robert Newby can provide more of the request details and answer any questions.
Okay, the the matter before you today, Robert Newby, General Services, is to approve the the purchase of the improvements for a price of one hundred thousand dollars located at Government Plaza on South Mooney from the Golden State YMCA. These improvements consist of a forty-eight hundred square foot modular building and other improvements listed on Exhibit Eight of the purchase contract. This ma, this matter will authorize the county administrative officer or his designated to execute all additional documents needed to consummate the purchase of the improvements. There are a few things that will take place just because the, they're modular buildings. We have to work with the Department of Housing and Community Development at the state of California. So this will direct the auditor to draw a warrant in favor of Golden State YMCA in an amount not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars upon request made by the county administrative officer or designated. It may be slightly less because the sellers are paying for the cost to the HCD for transferring these improvements. And lastly, they'll need to approve the necessary budget adjustments, adjustments per the odd three oh eight. It requires a four-fifth vote. Move funds within the capital project's budget to an appropriate line to purchase the capital assets.
Okay. Any questions?
I see this lease, we'll recover thirty thousand a year on this lease, right? Twenty-five hundred a month?
Yeah, that's right. Twenty-five hundred dollars a month.
Again, anyone from the public wishing to address this matter? Not? entertain a motion.
For approval.
Motion by Supervisor Anis.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Cox. Please cast your votes, and the votes are in, and they are unanimous. Gentlemen.
Mr. Chair, can we ask that our property man, since this is a modular-type building, we ask that our property manager people watch this thing, make sure it doesn't leak and rot and fall apart like we've had other buildings do?
Well, it would help because there's somebody in it this time. Some of the ones we've had problems with in the past, there was nobody in them, but
And now that we own the building, we can do more of our direct maintenance on a direct oversight of the building.
Point well taken. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That concludes our items in open session. We have some closed session items, counsel. This morning.
Excuse me. Yes, Mr. Chairman, you do. You have Items A through I on your board's closed session agenda. I do not anticipate any announcements.
Thank you.